Okay, well, welcome everybody to our town meeting of March 16, 2021. And we're gonna have a public hearing here in the next couple of minutes, but we've just got a couple of motions we've gotta move forward on first. So, uh, everybody's had a chance to review our agenda, and if everybody's comfortable with that, and get a motion to move forward on that. Moved by Councilor Patale, seconded by Councilor DeGoe. Be it resolved at the Council of Towne Nipewa to approve the regular meeting agenda from March 16, 2021. And everybody's had a chance to review the minutes, if there's no errors or omissions, and everybody's comfortable with that, and get a motion to move forward on that. Moved by Councilor Dreyer, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hedley.
Agenda or minutes?
Uh, did I not say minutes?
This should be the agenda.
No, you did the agenda.
I did the agenda, sorry.
Did you?
I'll do the agenda.
Yes. No, that's okay. That's okay. I just don't seem to have a piece of paper. Okay, so yeah, so I got the motion that we're gonna move, uh, to approve the minutes for, uh, what was the?
March.
Oh, here we go, yeah, March section 2021. Okay, all in favor? Okay, sorry, problem. Okay, we are going to move into the public hearing, so I need a motion on that to open the public hearing. So, moved by Deputy Mayor Hedley, seconded by Councilor Costincheck. Be it resolved at the Council of Towne Nipewa to now open this public hearing to hear representation variation application B-01-20-1 for Jaden Platt. So Jeff, do you wanna speak to that?
Sure, uh, this is application B-01, 2021-n, owner of the property is Jaden Gloria Platt, the applicant is Jaden Platt. The proposal's a variation order, uh, variation requested to reduce the minimum dwelling unit area from the required funds, from the required 800 square feet to a proposed 540 square feet, to reduce the front yard setback from the required 25 feet to the proposed 16 feet, reduce the rear yard setback from the required 25 feet to the proposed 15 feet, and to reduce the side yard setback of the south boundary from the required 6 feet to a proposed 4 feet. And it's affecting, uh, 237 First Avenue being lot 5, Plan 7286. And the reason in support is to allow for the construction of a new two-story single-unit dwelling within the RT Residential two-unit dwelling.
Okay, um, I think we have some people in the audience that want to speak to this.
Sure.
You can come up and sit in the chair here if you want.
Okay.
Tell us who you are and where you go.
Jaden was nervous to go see you.
I'm nervous to do that.
I'm very, I like, I do the real estate for Jaden. Jaden's done quite a few houses in Brandon. He does renovating and refixing, and he totally restored his own. And one day he was in Nipewa and saw this house, purchased it. And then I come and looked at it after, and then when we went planning, we find out that it needs quite a bit more work than it's there. So we either bulldoze it, sell the lot, uh, try to recoup the money, or we go engineering, back it all up, put new foundations, make it up to today's standards. So I was looking at it, and I thought, that's the replay, the house we're replacing it with is actually a smaller footprint than the one that's there. So, and somehow over the years, that backyard got cut. It belongs to the other neighbor. So what we're doing is we have a sort of an idea of what it is. Just a two-story, uh, we're figuring no basement. And we figured as soon as we build it, it'll already be sold. I put my sign on the property, I didn't list it, I left the agents still in town, and, uh, we've got calls off the sign. You guys are short of housing. We are. So, this is, uh, this is one of the, because of Jaden doing work, we might even look at some more infills, if you guys are open to that. They do a lot of infill housing in Brandon where they take the 100-foot lot, make it in half, and build and go. And that's big business right now, and there's quite a bit to be done. So that's what we're asking, the house isn't smaller than there, and we're just trying to, we figure it's cheaper to build a new one, and try to replace the ones there.
So did you have a square foot each attack to your new construction?
Yeah, it's 18 by 34 for that building.
Well, yeah, the one that you, if it was the same drawing, it works up to the 540 square feet.
Yeah, so that's a 1028.
On two floors.
Two floors. So three bedroom, half bathroom up, and five something down, it'd be a living room, kitchen, and a small bath there. A story here.
Okay.
We could put a basement underneath it, but we might drive the price too high.
Right, I appreciate that.
Probably call, it'd all look nicer, I think, without the full basement being, you know, there out of the ground. So it's not really any higher, it's actually a little bit smaller. It's got enough side parking for a car, could go up the side, it's 13 feet. So the driveway can come out by the house, and the deck can kind of sort of go up the side also, and put a deck on it, and so it does fit.
Okay, perfect. So I guess it's just a little clarification for, it seems like extreme variations, and they kind of normally are, um, but in the same respect, this is also dealing with a rather unusual lot, how it got created that way is, I don't know. It's approximately 35 feet wide by 65 feet deep with zero back lane access, so, so it is very odd lot, so.
They must've sold some of it off, the neighbor did, or?
I would presume at some point, yeah.
Yeah, we have those in, uh, the city sometimes will sell part of the back alley that's dead, and some of the houses will go out. It is short, it's usually 110 or 120. We still have a 15-foot yard, but we'll need a little variance on the front, right?
Well, we, yeah, we vary the, based off of the site draw I provided, we vary the front. And depending on if it proceeds, it would require a survey. I'm just presuming, just by some rough measurements that I've taken on the property, it's probably gonna be, won't be able to front far as the existing one. But now it'll probably be set back a bit, but, uh, the final determination would be if it's approved, that survey will predict or locate those boundaries and then deciding from there, so.
Did you hear, get any comments from anybody yet in that?
Uh, it's been circulated to the, um, neighboring properties within 100 meters. I had, I think, two discussions with two, um, two neighboring properties, but there's been no formal, nothing formal provided, so.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments from the council? Jeff, Councilor Parry.
Uh, so, you say you do this in Brandon all the time, basically? And you inspect your houses before you start?
Well, generally, I purchase them through real estate, and this one was just on a private deal, that's kind of why, I guess. We figured we would fix it up, that was the initial thought, and it can still be done, just once we got looking at it, we had an engineer, uh, Pam Sumner was there looking at it as well. Just seemed like maybe required that amount of refixing, that it would be smarter financially for me, I guess, to build a new house, that's, that's where it's at. I don't know if that answered your question about inspecting it before we buy it, but should've probably done a little more, that's, you know, honestly.
Normally, when I sell it to Jaden, we write in, uh, check the planning and checking it out, so we always have a checked balance, so we can move brand new and climbing, get the permit approved before we get the purchase. This one kind of happened when he bought it, and then when I looked at it, oh, oh. And then when we went to planning, another, oh, oh. So.
So could you maybe explain that, Jeff, though, where it doesn't fit into the code that we?
The current building?
Yeah.
Uh, it's got some major structural.
But then the new build, the new build would, would?
Well, the new build?
Yeah.
Well, the new build would be an engineer plowed up to.
Yeah, so everything's good there, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, so essentially what we're dealing with on that end of it would be the local, um, it can be a simple side, mean the, uh, we have a minimum size requirement for dwelling of 800 square feet, obviously this one's smaller, and then it's, it's closer to the property boundaries than what is owned by a lot of house, so.
Yours is 800 even on the two-story?
Yes, it's footprint, yeah, not over square footage, yeah.
And you, are you comfortable renovating the existing house or that's? I don't think they are either, but.
Myself, no, uh, but, um, I, you know, if, if an individual wants to spend the money and does it properly, and wants to go through the work, that's, that's totally up to them, like, I mean, it's, it's.
My idea is, you're rid of it however.
Okay.
I said, you know, you're either bulldozing and selling to the neighbor, doing whatever, or make a park, donate us a park.
Which we did try, but I kind of asked the neighbors if they're interested in more land or whatever, they both already had extra big lots, so that, that.
I'm worried about the rest.
Okay. To renovate the existing one, it would, it wouldn't be relocated, it would have to sit exactly in the same footprint it is now, right in the same position, it would have to literally lift it straight up, new foundation put underneath it, house come down, and then restructure the house from there up, so. It would, what you see there would sit there, um, just obviously brought up to structural stability and, and also current facilities too, so.
The problem being too, besides the lot, we got really no place to move earth or do things. So it's gonna cause street problems and everything.
Okay. Okay, good, any other questions from the council? Okay, I guess that's it, thank you, great time. Make a decision.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Not that tough, dude.
Okay, we're gonna move forward then to, uh, move over our public hearing. Moved by Councilor Patale, seconded by Councilor Costincheck. Be it resolved at the Council of Towne Nipewa to now adjourn the public hearing at 7:15 PM, all in favor? Okay, um. We are moving on to, uh, another delegation presentation, and that is my piece in regards to the dark part. Mike, you wanna come up? Boston?
Well, thanks for having me.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Uh, I'm just trying to get the ball rolling again, I guess is why I'm here, I sent Colleen an email after talking to Nikki Free. Uh, I guess their committee is kind of disbanded, for lack of a better term. They got busy with their lives and kids and everything else, and I kind of just let it on standby, so I'm just kind of trying to help out, do some of the night work here to see if we can get it going again.
Okay, so do you have any, have you got any proposal which is?
I don't have too much, Nikki was supposed to send me some stuff that she had, talked to you guys previously, and she hasn't yet. Uh, I tried emailing her today, got nothing back from her.
Okay.
Um, I'm almost at the point of just maybe trying to see if she'll relinquish the bank account and start from scratch.
Okay, so we're just at an early stages then, right? So you, do you know how much money you have available for this?
She told me over $5,000, is all I've been told.
Okay. All right, so your next step in the process is, are you trying to form a committee, or?
Um, I'm actually just trying to see if there's a lot somewhere and what size, and start pricing up the fencing, and trying to find labor to do it, and.
Okay, okay.
But, uh, you guys think having committees better, or?
No, I know, I'm just asking, I'm not, uh, no, this is serious. Any questions or comments from the, yeah, Councilor Parry?
Yeah, I know, council was exceptionally supportive of the idea when it was brought forward back in 2016, I believe it was.
Fifty?
Fifty, okay, yeah, okay, sorry. Yeah, we were exceptionally, because we knew it's a, it can be a part of the complement of economic development, tourism, not to mention just quality of life, uh, for within the community. I guess really, from, from our point, it was just the committee wanting to follow through on the project, so I, I mean, from my own perspective, in my opinion, hasn't changed of a, well, off the shelf, I'd be completely supportive of it, but it's just a question of what, um, I guess the organizing committee wants to do, or if there is going to be one to bring forward, um, that's me speaking for myself, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think Carol probably speaks for the council, I think we all think it's a great idea, and that's right, I think you just need to maybe bring us a little bit more of a proposal, and, uh, and Colleen, do you have anything you wanna add?
No, I think this is what I, I'd say not seen background information, because clearly this was in a previous council that it was debated, um, you know, whether there's a preference for location, and we've, uh, clearly identified by the resolution council in 2015 that the location would be up near the playgrounds of this property, kind of as you enter from the north, uh, it would be on the east side. So that was designated by resolution, and it's not saying it would be elsewhere, because, uh, obviously, as things, times change, it's could've been a few years now. Originally, the request, I think, that came forward to council was that it be over by the compo site. Uh, whether that was, uh, you know, briefly discussed, done for access off number five, if, you know, for use of travelers, I, we don't know that answer. Uh, that could be up for dibs again, mainly because I think we look at the location of our multi-use trail park and the associated uses over there, does that tie in really nicely with, um, you know, we do your walk, you do your thing, and then you let your dog, you know, have a little free roam on his own time? Because he has to be unleashed through multi-use trail park, or, or going over to Park Lake Side where there is kind of a nice street area there more to the south is also an option. So I don't know if you had something in your mind, you were thinking was better, or Nikki did, or?
Um, she had spoke that there were, that there was, uh, grounds at the fairgrounds, and that, yeah, from the literature used at me, I realized that there were, there was thoughtful compos down, the road green park, so I just didn't know that you guys need me to come and make proposal of where and when and why, but no, that'll, that'll start me off fine.
Okay.
Unless, like I say, council thinks they want to point to, because it's town land, you know, whether you wanna point to it, particularly parcel, I don't, I can't speak to it.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, if I have a strong opinion, that, it's, I, I, yeah, I mean, there's benefits to Park Lake, there's benefits to, to up around the multi-use trail park, I mean, those are both great locations, right, I guess we have to, again, that's another thing I guess we'd have to know, is how big are you gonna build it? You know, so it doesn't fit our footprint, um, is it a six-foot fence, is it a four-foot fence, is it an eight-foot fence? Like, I guess there's some things we need to know, maybe that would determine a little bit the location, I, I don't know that, but, yeah, it would be probably nice if you could come back with a, yeah, but I mean, I think Council Dreyer speaks for all of us, we, we think it's a great idea, we've always, like, this, there goes back to 2015, that it, you know, the council signed off on it then, and for whatever reason, it just didn't happen, right? So nothing's changed in six years except for a pandemic, so, yeah. So, yeah, no, that's great. Perfect, no, thank you, you're done. Hey, you, okay.
Just so you know, Mike, for slides, the one that we've been working with for some mapping, and I think Nikki can do it some more, you know, what is available for size agreements?
Okay, sounds great.
And then you'll have a place for your chihuahua.
No, that's tip. Thank you very much.
Say, not a chihuahua? Nothing?
Yes.
That was a shock.
Okay, I guess we'll move forward with council reports, so does anybody have a council report in March?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Parry.
Okay, uh. All right, so first off, uh, we've been doing some work at the clinic again. So we have the vaccination room prepared, and I put the fridge in it yesterday. Uh, so when that becomes operational, it will be up to PMH and the doctors' group here. And to what level of vaccination that's going to be, I have no idea. And you are not to call the clinic and start trying to make appointments, that's not how that works.
Okay.
Uh, we also started renovating, uh, the, the boot, or the room for the light therapy booth. And, uh, it is supposed to arrive at the end of March. I'll be looking for three other strong people to help me get it in there. And this morning, we had, uh, an infrastructure meeting, uh, with associate engineering. Ken Anderson came up to, uh, go through the final details of our reservoir project. And it was incredibly intense, two and a half hours, where I'm, uh, wanting to speak on Howard Buffy's incredible knowledge and ability and guidance that he provided. And the suggestions for proper functionality that he provided that were accepted by associate engineering, so. Alkalase to Howard Buffy, he's an incredible guy. And that's probably where I'll stop talking, uh, as far as the streets and stuff, then he's gonna be speaking on that.
Okay.
For technical.
Any questions or any comments?
Yep, Murray, on with, uh, when you talk about light therapy, is this something that's on wall, is this a blue?
Well, all the doors are open, you walk in without anything on. Tent advice? Okay, sorry, mom. Push a button, and stand there, and wait five to 10 minutes, lights go out, you get nice music. Go back out, it's all computer controlled, your, your name is already in the computer, all they do is put your name in, your treatment schedule is there, it's psoriasis, dermatitis, motions, you know, it's a pretty good thing.
Not just in condition.
And it's, uh, we have quite a few. The reason we're getting it is we have a lot of people in this attachment area that need that service, and our doctors are cooperating here in Nipewa with that, as well as any dermatologists in Brandon to make it happen here. So we're adding one more thing to our, our ability to provide medical services here.
Yeah, that's pretty exciting. Okay, thank you, Mary.
Quick question about that deep freezers, are they the super low temperature ones?
No, um, this is to host the virus, the vaccine that is moderate temperature. Like, the lowest this fridge will go, uh, against, like, it gives you your, your settings that you decided on, and it's, it's just above freezing. So it'll keep you at a very cool, cool temperature, but it won't freeze it.
Yes, it won't be for the Madero, and it won't be for the Pfizer.
And, and it's interesting, because it comes with its own alarm system, it's all hooked up to, um, computers, and it comes with a second compressor, because if the first one fails, you have the second one to install right away. That's, uh, it's, um, a well-thought-out setup, so the vaccine won't be compromised.
Okay. Yes, Councilor Costincheck.
I just have a question about the light spectrum therapy, is that gonna be covered under Manitoba Health?
It is covered under Manitoba Health if you are under physician's care for that treatment.
Okay. Now, do we have any other council reports? Councilor Patale.
I just want to bring attention to the Deepwater Swimming Pool 2021 swimming lesson schedule has been posted on the Towne Nipewa Facebook webpage. Uh, for anyone that's interested, the information can be found there. Uh, registration was earlier today for session one and two, however, tomorrow, March 17th, uh, starting at 7:00 AM, session four, five, and six, registration occurs, March 18th, at, starting at 7:00 AM for session seven A and seven B. And for anyone interested in private lesson inquiries, uh, please call the office, uh, starting May 17th.
Okay, thank you. Your question, huh? Oh, I have? Yeah, I was saying, I was supposed to say that with my hat on, sorry, sorry. It's starting to get in our spring feeling. Have a safe Patrick's table.
Tomorrow is a bad.
We'll lose its context when you're watching this muncher. Thank you, Councilor Patale. Anybody else? Councilor Dreyer?
Yes, uh, this is from Finance Committee, it's just really more of an update that, uh, previously on March 2nd and council meeting previous, uh, Finance Committee has been meeting as a committee of the whole as we are going through ongoing collaborations for the upcoming budget, because that will be appearing very soon, uh, once it gets posted and posted along here.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, happens over here. Uh, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Kenee, Manitoba Operations.
So Jody's not speaking again, but she gave me a nice list. Those council pro mentions, swimming regulations is open. Um, and if people are curious how to keep track of this stuff, it's on our website, but it's also on our Facebook page, so if you're not following already, or you're not sure, or set reminders, you keep popping in now and then, you'll see lots of updates, staff generally updated, like, you guys, almost every date there's something new posted.
Okay.
So there's always some tidbit of information going up there, so it's really useful. Uh, the old firewall demolition is kind of going great, others might be ahead of schedule, um, and I'll follow up with total demolition to see how they're progressing with the final cleanup. Uh, front of our building, if anyone has a drink Bible, most of we have new sign up, civic administration, we actually have a civic address again, so hopefully that's not driving circles with you first again. Residents, just always, it's a good idea to just check, uh, around your water meter for leaks. In most cases, uh, you do get the calls every now and then from residents who may go to water leak, and generally it's on the valve, and those can be tightened up, you don't need to get a plumber, and if you really want to bug Howard, you just need a few tips and have, you know.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, another, I see a lot of, and I'll pick on Councilor Patale, because we've got a lot of, a lot of front of. All of our town water is safe to drink, uh, there are personal preferences, or people prefer bottled water, but again, this is to all new residents to Nipewa, and this, all of our tap water is 100% safe to drink, so. And, uh, again, if you follow our Facebook page or you check the newspaper, we still have our summer staff positions open, those will be closing April 5th, so for parks, lifeguards, day camp. We don't have a cemetery noted, but they'll be flooding probably from parks over there to kind of assist facilitate, and we may also be paying on how staffing might have a position or two in public works. Uh, I know that public works been busy around town, steaming a lot of our coldest and drains, so trying to get rid of those nice little water puddles. We've also been already on the puddle attack, we've already picked up one loan for sure of cold drinks to continue all our puddle repairs. Uh, again, residents can go to our contact page on the town website, email us if there's something that we haven't noticed, and make them try to get staff to remedy that as well. And we did participate again with some of the floodwork, uh, we had StanTech come give us an early briefing, and we also did, uh, look at the golf course bridge, because they need some repairs there, so we're also collaborating with them to assist with some of their repairs. And for their, the infrastructure stuff, that's promised to Councilor, to Mayor, question, we do have our briefing going out. That was issued today, uh, our tender, and it's a quite extensive list. Regrettably, my crew first and myself messed up, so we'll have to issue an amendment on a closing date, so it's not Easter Monday. But, uh, we have, at this point, a total of 2.4 kilometers of paving in the early tender request, and optimistically, we can budget, hopefully afford that, if we can't, I have the clause there where we can withdraw a few streets to ensure that still falls within our budget parameters, it also covers off all the patching for 21, and also added a few extra ones going, organizing utility costs going in. So we've, uh, requested priority, because it's a large paving project, and also because we do have infrastructure and housing going up on the CN site, that we don't want to triple each other, so if they can prioritize paving, certain areas will be requested that. So that is to close on April 6th now, so we'll have that for next council meeting, we may have results that can be approved at a meeting as well.
Or, do you, do you foresee that it, you'll be in a, will be in queue for quite a while, do you want, if it gets approved, or do you think?
Yeah, I've checked Merx, and there's a few paving tenders out there right now, um, I'll have to, again, once we get a closer idea of, once the bids come in and communicate with them, we'll see how many, if they've been, if successful bidder has many projects lined up. But I said, if the project's big enough, then hopefully we can get to the top, to the front of the list next one.
So are you prepared, if it was quick, you would be prepared to do the CN profit in any, in any time now?
Yeah, they're gonna have base prep, so we, we, we roughed in the streets, uh, there's some fine tining with catch basins to make sure we get elevations proper, we'll talk to surveyors on that, so everything drains in the right direction, that's a component built into the tender as well, that they have to stay, get graded, and come up with a rough design, we'll obviously have an idea of how we want it to look, but we'll be working with the contractor on that one.
So, and curves?
Curves, good, everything, yeah.
And what about lighting, what, who, where does that fall in there?
Street lighting, that falls under the natural lighting contract, so.
Okay.
They had, they're mobilized, uh, the material there for the streetlights, so we're hoping they get back in here shortly.
Okay, perfect. Councilor Gerard.
I have just a couple of questions. So on street lighting, is there impact of the strike?
I have not heard anything yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have to reach out and find out.
It's a rotational strike, so they are still putting projects in the queue, but depending on Eugene, the underground crew there clearly, you have to wait out the rotation because as they do their weekly rotation, that project gets bumped now a week or so. So we will experience hopefully just a modest delay. The recommendation is, because my son works for Hydro, if we aren't happy, they want to hear those results from the impacted customers of what happens when Hydro strikes.
I guess my other question would be, is notified by a repair that there's been some sewer backups in around the area on 1st and Mountain, around the Salvation Army building and some issues like that? What was the cause of that? Do we know?
The first at Mountain, I'm not too familiar with our, the Mountain Avenue one appears to be breached. That occurred in the weekend. When all the reports came back, that it was a minor plug that it still had flow going by, so a little deceptive, but further investigation, they did deem that there was some grease blockage in place. So I will be, I guess probably wrong by means, we'll be issuing out some cleaning and televising of those zones to ensure that there's nothing that deformed in the pipe that's going to be collecting debris in certain areas. So they will do a full scour of that section and have a televised as well so we can see visually if there's anything nasty going on there.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Denise. Okay, we're going to move forward into our street speed zone reduction request. Colleen.
This is just a letter notifying you that following up on our June 2020 information for the reduction in speed limit on the portion of PD 6 feet going from the East of Deepwater to past Halle to the depression line there was received. And of course, we followed up in February with more documentation information to the Minister of Infrastructure and talking with a few other departments, talking about the importance of getting this looked at. And I know there's COVID, that people can't quite perform the services they have been, but we have been advised that they will be looking at our application. It's scheduled for investigation in April of 2021 of this year. And once they prepare the reports and whatnot, do their internal review, they will hopefully have a final decision to ask by June of this year.
Okay, perfect. And I mean, at the end of the day, we have no input into this at all already except that we're asking.
Well, we do because we've sent up, well, we sent our application, which is very limited what you can put through the portal. It's an online application now. So our follow up in February, document I created for you showing the changes there since our previous application hopefully had some weight for a better understanding of what happened there because I think most importantly, the time they did the study there for the traffic counts was when they were doing the resurfacing of PD 16, basically right through past Glasgow and one mark and on. And there's been a lot of activity and changes that occurred in that piece of roadway since then. And the travel counts would have been skewed at the time based on travelers choosing to not remain in line to access the highway and perhaps going down and modify by itself to not remain.
Okay, well, we'll think with thoughts and hopefully they get back with you in the first. Okay, moving forward, we also are now going to look at TransCanada Yellowhead Highway Association called for 2021 resolutions.
That's basically what it is.
Okay.
We remember the TransCanada Yellowhead Highway and clear that it's your position on PD 16, so we're in it. I think councillor Parrot has actually been kind of participating in some of the meetings where we've been a little more secondary in the past because, of course, Highway 16 runs quite a length across Canada. You know, what is the local flavor here? So every year we do get this request and if there's something that doesn't relate to the BD 16 being more on a Canada-wide basis or more locally, we have the opportunity to actually submit a resolution into your floor for the convention.
So is that something we get every single?
Well, well.
Okay.
There was a time when Deepwas quite active on the association because there were a lot of things they were maneuvering at the time. So currently, Merx starts it from Shaw Lake as the president of the association, remembering from Highway 1 all the way to coast. And we have monthly meetings that are dealing with projects that are necessary along. So like if there's a location somewhere on Highway 16 that needs addressing, the locality is not getting enough coverage on it, the association as a group puts forward recommendations and you know, like hopefully putting a little more meat behind it. And they also aid in kind of like bringing life to anything along Highway 16 and letting travelers know that there's all these entities to this along way. The last email that Conning sent out, or that Merriman sent out that showed our inclusion in the travel Manitoba thing, you know, I said that up to him because that was the type of thing that we want our website to be able to do. And so that was a very, that was a really cool thing. Somebody should be talking about that.
Okay.
Who would talk about that other than you, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah. It's news.
Smiling, I'm smiling. Yeah, it was a little cool. And so, yeah, so it's an, to me, it's an important, important association. It's not that expensive to join each year. To me, it's worth it.
And it must be quite a few members if it goes right to the code.
Can I maybe give you an example? Even though we haven't officially put a resolution in more recently in the last three years, Shaw Lake and Strathair were actually asking for the support of the association to get passing lanes. As much as they're being created in other areas along number 16, they were kind of lacking in that area. So they sent in a resolution and asking for the support of the association to put some passing lanes in. So that would be an example of what you might put forward.
And we also send a thank you for the resurancing. You know, like any effort to improve safety gets recognized and so it's not just asking, it's also thank.
Okay. Yes, Councilor Gerard.
So would that be something that again, we need to put through a resolution through to them then as far as the heat reduction change on the yellowhead? If we were considering.
You could, but then that's also the naturalist purview. So this is kind of a main organization which I think probably would support you, but it's all going to boil down to the Minister of Infrastructure is now before you to make that change.
But the association would put in a resolution to support our resolution.
Yeah.
I heard that. And they have done that and like we've since have been on there, we've seen several of those from different.
I'm thinking the timing in this case, because if they haven't announced a date with the convention, we might have our results back on infrastructure by then. And maybe then we do another follow up, I don't know, but well, I guess we'll see what happens.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Parrot. As we move forward, we have a reassessment cycle change calling.
So this is a moment that the recent came out from the Department of Municipal Relations regarding a change to the current reassessments cycle. Given the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, the province is changing the current reassessment cycle, moving the reference date of the current reassessment to April 1st, 2021. This will allow real estate market trends and transactions to be more accurately reflected in property assessments for taxation purposes and reduce appeals. This change is aligned with best practices across Canada with minimal impacts on how Manitoba receives the test values of the properties. So the next assessment period would begin in 2023 and the regular two-year cycle would continue from that point forward. So just for your knowledge, the reference date of an assessment is the specific date used to determine the market value of your property. So for the 2020 assessment, called reassessment year, the value that they were referencing at that time, your market value of your property would have been April 1st to 2018. So these changes, I think largely due to the fact that the inspections are not getting complete in time right enough. There's been also lack of staff due to retirements and whatnot in various assessment branches. As is the case in Minidota, where they're currently lacking a commercial successor, for example, so even some of our properties haven't been started assessment role yet. So this will give them the ability to catch up, maybe restaff and start fresh again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we'll move forward with our financial statement for January 2021. Everybody's had a chance to review it and no questions or comments? Yep, councillor Ado.
No, sorry, I was a little eager there.
Okay, this is for the motion, I apologize. Yeah, move by councillor Ado, seconded by deputyrea, cabinet, we'll go with. Be resolved, we approve the financial statement for the month ending January 31st, 2021. All in favor? Here. Okay, we are going back into Deepwater Offleash Dog Park. Colleen.
Nope, this is just your top of the agenda and Mr. Speeds came as folks, if you want to have more discussions up to you.
No, no, I think we're good. I think we have a client. Okay, no, fine, we'll move on to that. So we're back into new business and we are now back to the application of Mr. Platt that was just at our table. And I guess we have to make a decision on, unless we want to make another decision, but otherwise we're going to move forward with allowing it or not allowing it. So what's the comments?
I think the square footage alone, like that's quite a significant decrease than the, the current allowable limits within Deepwater. 540 square feet is pretty small.
Right. Okay. Councilor Gerard.
Yeah, I concur, councillor Phil. It wasn't that many years ago that this community had a legal fight and we rectified some situations with some homes that weren't in compliance with square footage. And I, we set the precedent there that we weren't going to accept that within our community and it involved legal expenses, insurance. I don't know if we're still even 100% resolved on that. So at this point, okay, if we are 100%, okay, you never know, but it seems like every once in a while, every once in a while, it seems to reappear its head, so.
Don't speak to me.
Yeah. But just speaking to that, I mean, as a council, we have done various in the past regarding setbacks and property lines if that was what the neighbors agree with, but in the case of this square footage, I mean, that's a fight that we just have and I just hope that we revisit.
Yeah. Councillor Parrot.
Yeah, and thank you. I'm sure my understanding and my responsibility is to not repeat mistakes and to invite developers to come in to our community and develop in a proper fashion according to our expectations.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll move the motion so that it can be on the table.
Okay. So, so moved by councillor Parrot.
You have to put in a form.
Okay, so moved by councillor Parrot. And seconded by.
Can you clarify your motion, councillor Parrot?
Well, whatever the motion, he's going to read the motion.
Okay, cool.
Never mind. So we'll vote on whether we accept it or not.
Seconded by councillor Costin check.
Yeah, just before we go forward then, I just wanted to add that, you know what, I agree with what everybody at the table said. It's unfortunate because we have a young man here that wants to build in our community and is talking about infill housing and you know, it's unfortunate that he's, it's, yeah, it's just going against what we have for our code requirements and yeah, it's just something, as all the councillors said, that's just something we have to maintain. So hopefully he'll still look around our community and maybe tries to find something else.
Okay, so be resolved, we approve, I'm still reading it that way, that we approve variation application of V-01-2020 of Jayden Platt to allow the construction of a new two-story single unit dwelling within the RT residential two-unit zone as per the following criteria. Reduce the minimum dwelling unit area from the required 800 square feet to the proposed 540 square feet. Reduce the front yard setback from the required 25 feet to the proposed 16 feet. Reduce the rear yard setback from the required 25 feet to the proposed 15 feet and reduce the side yard setback for the south boundary from the required 6 feet to the proposed 4 feet. Anybody in favor? Opposed? Good.
Just before we close this, could I just clarify for the purposes of Mr. Brown proceeding and responding to the applicant, if he wants to get an engineer's report and remedy what exists, that is still acceptable for you? Because the house is there already.
The house is there and yes, essentially if he wanted, if he met the criteria, they would have the code and he wanted to fulfill all the work to bring that structure up, he still could, yes.
Or as you mentioned, he could build demolish. It's his choice.
He will demolish.
Yeah.
Councillor Parrot.
And council also has to consider that there's several other locations in town where the existing structures are not meeting the zoning of that particular location. Should those structures burn down, there would be no rebuild.
Correct.
Should we go ahead with this, we would have a hard time following through on future decisions.
That's good. Okay. We're going to move forward on the subdivision for Zen Developments. Deputy speaking to that.
I'll call out the question.
So very quickly here, we have an applicant, Zen Developments Limited. James Johnson is the applicant from that company. It is, the proposed subdivision would be on Lot 1, Lot 1, Plan 26984 and part of parcel C, Plan 62813 in the southwest of 33, 14, 15. Just to clarify, if those people will further to it, it is the previously called co-op area. It would be the north building that is isolated on its own particular and not attached to the rest of the building. Zen Developments is the registered owner, they bought a parcel of land located at the southwest corner of Bryan Street West, Mount Mount in town Deepwater. There's only one large building on the property to be subbed away. They want to create one new lot that has an existing commercial use on it. Under the development plan, the subject property is designated CBD commercial area according to the Deepwater area planning district development plan by law. Under zoning, the property is classified as CC central commercial zoning. Comments through the circulation process that has to happen through the province, land types will require a two lot subdivision, Lot 1 being CT 2955434/5, together with that portion carved out of parcel C of CT 2947334/5. Lot 2 would be the residual parcel of parcel C and of course, it has its own title as well. LMTS does not require easements at this time. Manitoba Conservation and Climate, the Department of Water Stewardship said if there's any movement in drainage and water rights licensing required, we should direct them to the subdivision guide. I don't think there's any issues in that particular instance. We also spoke internally, there's empty water and sewer there, there is no need for any adjustments there. All other agencies respond with no comments or concerns. There is no land use planning issues identified at all. And of course, unless there's any variations required by our planning office. So just so you know, it's in discussion with our planning office as well. We're looking at requiring variations to reduce the rear yard property setback from the required 20 feet to a proposed 9 feet 6 inches. That the property owner complete an engineered review of the existing structure to ensure there are no fire separation concerns. Unprotected openings are generalized safety items that may be compromised due to this proposed new boundary. And that the parking requirement goes along the line with the provisions of the song about.
Okay. Any questions, any comments? Councillor Parrot.
So this is a situation where the building is existing, it's the property that is sitting on with property one hundred is being separated from the rest of the property, so it's the old coal gas lot. So this is a situation where the building is staying, it's going to be retrofitted to product standards. Should this building be torn down, the variations that we are approving today will not carry forward to a new build, am I correct, sir?
That would be correct, yeah. A new build would have to comply with the requirements of the setback or reapply as needed. Okay, let's get to that. Anybody else? Councillor Ado.
Just to be clear, so people understand which exact piece of property we're talking about. So we're talking about where the car wash is currently? Does it include the bookstore, the old bookstore also?
I'll just, you know, just comment on that. Having the co-op facility, having been there and. having been there in the, in the past and having, having moved out to the highway and that. You know, that was, uh, that was a huge concern of mine, um, looking at, uh, you know, it was a large footprint downtown. It wasn't large enough for our, our current uh, setup, but it was a large footprint downtown. And boy, I've been worried a lot over the years, you know, and, and to see the Jensen group come forward and uh, you know, make something work out of there. Um, and, and now to see if there's an opportunity, opportunity to get uh, the former service station um, and see that repurposed, you know, it, it's, it's nice to see in a community where these things are repurposed or not uh, torn down. And that, you know, at times that could, that could have been a, a pretty empty block for a long time. So certainly I, you know, congratulate people to come forward and uh, and look at doing these things.
No, I agree. I mean, it's nice. I mean, you know, we, we had some concerns there for quite a few years with the, with the old Murray property there, right? I mean, it sat empty and then we got the new shop there and now we got the parking lot going up. And now we've grabbed Zen. I think they almost got the old block building full. Um, I know Niqua Settlement Services has taken on another big chunk out above. And uh, and I think some other people are looking down there. So yeah, no, it's great. I love to see the downtown being revitalized and I know it's really good for our community to see that, see that occur.
So you're absolutely right. Okay, so nobody else has any comments or questions? We'll move forward with the resolution. Moved by councillor Parrot. Seconded by councillor Butler. Be resolved, I've reapproved subdivision 4437 dash 21 dash 8250, Zen Developments to subdivide lot one, block one, plan 26984 and point parcel C, plan 62813 in southwest 33 dash 14 dash 15 west, subject to the following conditions. That a variation order be granted to reduce the rear yard property setback from the required 20 feet to a proposed nine feet, six inches. That the property owner complete an engineered review of the existing structures to ensure that there are no fire separation concerns, unprotected openings or general life safety items that may be compromised due to the proposed new boundary. And that parking requirements for the proposed lot align with the provisions of the zoning by law. All in favor? Here. Okay, I think we are down to other business. Anything anybody wants to talk about?
I'd like, I'd like to bring something from the floor. Uh, we did, he was reading his report. I think he had a good idea. He said if there was any potholes in town, that residents can simply email. Uh, is there a simple email that everyone can remember like pothole and, or is it just Niqua?
Well, I believe we just reported that on the phone, talked through. Is it definitely Niqua?
WC2A. Okay.
I don't mind being a pothole, I should. Gonna be a hot night, right? No, I. Not about, not about your kids.
No, that's good. As long as you have something rather easy. So you could, if you found a pothole and you wanted to report it to the town, you can simply email anyone almost that won't get directed to the right source.
Yeah, as long as they give a good description of where we find it, civic address, and then that will go as soon as it can.
Send us the GPS pin.
Yeah.
Just take a picture, yeah. It seems to have all that information. No, great. And I think, uh, I think likewise, I'd speak on behalf of the rest of council also. Please let us know of the location. We'll make sure it gets brought to the attention of town staff also, so.
Okay, thank you, David.
Uh, I guess the only thing I'd like to talk about maybe is, you know what? Uh, we're coming up on the, the spring break at the school and you know what? I mean, we're just a clean year after the pandemic now that started. And I think we hear a lot of negative news all the time about, you know, this is going wrong and this is bad and this can be better. And I think, I think we should start focusing more on the positive. I mean, we're, I mean, we're, we're really close to, to coming out of this. And I mean, we're, we're heading into spring, we're heading into summer. I mean, the vaccines are on the way. Um, you know, summer is, summer's gonna come, we're gonna be back outside. Um, I just think we need to, to, to remember that, you know, what, that, and, and we're in, in the Prairie Mountain Health region and in, in a, in a white blood region and in the town of Niqua. I mean, we've been extremely confident at what we've done. We've had basically no cases. And I mean, I, I know we don't wanna have people go, oh, great, that's, I don't have to wear my mask and I can do this. I'm not, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, you know what? We just, we gotta remember that, you know what? We, we need to, we need to start taking the positive of this, right? I mean, we're close and I know a lot of people are getting pretty grumpy. I've dealt with a few of them. And uh, you know, I think we just, we just have to accept that that's, you know, we're close. We're just so close. And I think, you know, what, we just gotta continue to march forward here and uh, and, and be ready to, to come, to get back to that new normal. And I think that new normal is gonna be pretty, pretty exciting. So I'm hoping for the old normal. Okay, well, I guess that's a possibility. If you wanna go with that.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we will move forward with uh, motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Butler, seconded by councillor Costin. Be resolved, that the council town Niqua can now adjourn the adjournment immediately, council at 8 p.m. All in favor? Here.